Yeah. We're gonna wait. Don't wanna get ready.
I don't start.
Doesn't start at three, doesn't start at...
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Laurel-Hadon School Board to order. Please stand for...
...meditation and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Mrs. Beal? Mr. DeAndrea?
Here.
Mrs. Glad?
Here.
Mr. Kalcik?
Here.
Mr. Laman?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Mr. Raymond? Mr. Renzi?
Here.
Mr. Seppic?
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda with a brief executive session.
I'll move contractual matters.
For contractual matters. Sir, second?
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Recognition of Laurel-Hadon stakeholders, anybody would like to address the board on any issue on the agenda, please stand and give us your name and your address. If it's on the agenda, yeah.
Right, it's on the agenda, isn't it?
You can speak on it now. Yes, go ahead.
All right. I know the board had an opportunity on Monday, your business meeting, the gentleman came in from New Jersey to talk about, may I give you, I heard a very fine presentation on our track and what needed to be done, along with some additional items to make our stadium start to look much better than it does now. I know that included removing the fence, taking care of the drainage problem in front of the stands, and asphalting where we wouldn't have trouble with grass and everything as it was or as it stands now. So, what we'd like to see now is where the board stands on that project. We know that the cost is gonna be up there, but we also know that when we started with the football field a few summers ago, there was some money that was allocated to help that project along with the track. And that is where myself as a coach, Coach Peg, and some of our parents and athletes are here, would like to know where the board stands on that and see if we can make that project move forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the attendance record of committee meetings and work sessions on February 13th, 2023.
I'll move. Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This meeting is televised via Atlantic Broadband, Channel 17, CTV, and YouTube, South Union Township Television.
Mr. Seppic, it is being televised on WMBS, Facebook Live. Let's see.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank Housler. Super Tenors Report.
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. I have a brief report today in a nutshell. We kicked off Black History Month this month, and we're celebrating across the district with various educational activities for all students and bringing recognition to all people of our great country. And that's all I have to say this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Comprehensive Strategic Plan and Board Policy Committee, Mr. DeAndrea. I'll get you, Mr. Er...
Revision to the following board policies, Exhibit A, transportation policy, graduation policy, dress and grooming policy, immunization and communicable disease policy, eligibility of non-resident students policy, enrollment of students policy, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other education instability policies. Put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Those are just updates, those are, we already had those policies, they're being updated.
Just updates on them.
Let me put it in form of a motion, the adoption of the PSBA Principles for Governance and Leadership, Exhibit B.
Motion.
Is recommended these principles be adopted annually?
Do we have a second?
No seconds.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Kalcik, Academic Foundation Report.
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. The Academic Foundation met on February 6th, they're gearing up for the high school production in Chicago for March 10th through March 12th. During the musical, the foundation will be selling concessions prior to the event, as well as during intermission. They will be hosting a Chinese auction as they have in years past. Donations will be asked of each school in the district, and the next meeting will be held on March 6th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kalcik. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Glad.
C1, I'd like to put into the form of a motion the approval of the school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year found in Exhibit C.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
C2 is informational. The Mini Mighty Mustangs will be hosting a literacy event themed past, present, future on Wednesday, March 8th, at the middle school from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's open to children of all ages for a fun evening. Hope to see you there. Visit www.lhsg.org to register for this event. C3 is also informational. Online kindergarten registration has launched on our website for the 2023-2024 school year. Parents will first complete the registration online, and then parents will be contacted by the elementary school to schedule their kindergarten screener, which will take place in May. As a reminder, all children being registered for kindergarten must be five years old prior to August 31st, 2023. There are no exceptions. That concludes my report, Mr. Seppic.
Thank you, Ms. Glad. Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Meadows?
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. I'd like to thank Mr. Glino for his report. I'd also like to thank his staff, both on the main inside and custodial side for their hard work. I don't think the reports don't go unnoticed. You know, the buildings are great, we've had a lot of adversities with the bad weather, maybe some more coming. I just wanted to thank everyone for all their hard work on that. That concludes my report, Mr. Seppic.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mr. DeAndrea.
I'd like to make a motion for bank reconciliation, board summary report, Exhibit D.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion for payment of bills, Exhibit E.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Thank you, yes.
Seven ayes.
I'd like to make a motion for payment of GOB bills, Exhibit 8, F.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Investment report is informational, it's Exhibit G. I'd like to make a motion for the federal report, Exhibit H, to approve it.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the student activity and athletic funds, Exhibit I.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve the audit report for McLaurin-Wolff for year ending June 30th, 2022, Exhibit J.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
I'd make a motion to approve the intermediate Unit 1 general operating budget for the 2023-2024 school year, Exhibit K.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
I'm staying.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Six ayes, one abstention.
Yes, in regards to the audit report that we talked about in the previous exhibit, we had a report last, or Monday night, from McLaurin-Wolff, we had a clean audit, and that's been historically how we operate here at the district. And what that means is, is that everything is in order with general accepted accounting principles. I'd like to thank the central administration, office staff, and specifically Mr. Hench on making sure that every penny that is spent is allocated and accounted for in the right manner. So, the district once again had a clean audit, which is what we want. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have a ton of money available to spend everywhere, but we do have the right accounting principles in place to make sure that we are accountable for what we do and what we spend our money on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee, Mrs. Glad?
I'd like to put into form of a motion FS1A, which is the cafeteria report for February found in Exhibit L.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Seppic.
Thank you, Ms. Glad. Security and Safety Committee, Mr. Renzi?
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. For form of a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Mr. James Schwollen Sr., school resource officer here at the high school, effective June 2nd, 2023. Mr. Schwollen has 10 years dedicated service to the district.
So, you have a second? Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And just as a brief moment, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Schwollen, I've known Mr. Schwollen for probably 20 years, he hasn't always worked here in the school, he's also a wrestling official, was a wrestling official earlier in his career, and I've worked with him with my son wrestling, he worked for the National Transportation Safety Board out of Pittsburgh Airport, and he came to us, and he has a really nice rapport with our students, he does a really nice job with both staff and students, and we wish him the very best, and I hate to see him go, but greener pastures are always out there, and we wish him the very best, so please give Mr. Schwollen a nice round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Transportation Committee, Mr. DeAndrea?
I'd like to make a motion to approve additional drivers for M&amp;R transportation, Exhibit M.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Personnel and Labor Relations, Mr. Kalcik?
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. Under P1A, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the substitute teachers found in Exhibit N.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Under P2, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the request by a professional employee A for unpaid leave for medical reasons from March 17th through June 2nd, 2023. Employee is currently off using cumulative days of unemployment.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Under P3, conference request, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve request by Jason Johns and one staff member to attend the PAF-CE annual conference at Kalahari Resorts, Port knows, April 16th through the 19th, 2023. This conference is mandatory and part of the requirements for TDE of federal program workers. Cost of this conference will be paid from title one funds, registration is approximately $400 plus lodging and travel expense per person.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Under support personnel, P4, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve additional substitute employees for support, rather, personnel found in Exhibit N. This includes Tracy Forsythe, Secretary, and Chris Williams, Custodian.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Under P5, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the resignation of Miss Stacy Adams, parent, paraprofessional, Hutcheson Elementary School, effective February 17th, 2023.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to congratulate and wish Stacy Adams the best in her future endeavors also. Please give her a round of applause for her service.
And P6, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the parent professional update found in Exhibit N.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Seppic.
Thank you, Mr. Kalcik. Athletic and Extracurricular Activities Committee, Mr. Laman?
Thank you, Mr. Seppic. Under A&amp;E1, I'd like to put in the form of a motion, permission to solicit bids for the fall sports. I'll second it.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to put in the form of a motion under A&amp;E2A to approve spring coaching positions for the 2022-2023 school year, and that's found in Exhibit P.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, are you gonna call it, are you gonna name them? Are you gonna name each one?
First of all, Dr. Wallace, please tell, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, under assistant varsity baseball coach, Joe Bonedio, head ninth grade baseball coach, Mark Mosclini, assistant ninth grade baseball coach, Tom Sankovich, head seventh and eighth grade baseball coach, Chris Van Meter, assistant seventh and eighth grade baseball coach, Richie Franks, assistant varsity softball coach, Christina Hudoff, head ninth grade softball coach, Josh Rambo, three assistant varsity boys and girls track coaches, William Kuzer, Kerry Whitman, and Irwin Brambley, head seventh and eighth grade boys and girls track coach, Martin Gaddy, three assistant seventh and eighth grade boys and girls track coaches, Jody, Joby Colombo, Abby Windgrove, or the Radcliffe, no applicants at this time for the head seventh and eighth grade girls basketball coaches, head eighth grade girls basketball coach, Ryan Schwarzbeger, and male school assistant volleyball coach, Leona Hettig. So, I'd like to put that in form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Under A&amp;E4A, I'd like to put this in the form of a motion to approve the agreement with Redstone Real Blood Facial for physical and occupational therapy for the 2023, 24, and 24, 25, extended school year service for June and July, 2024, 2025. That's under Exhibit Q. I'd like to put that in form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Did you do A3?
No, that's only a...
That's on... Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Thank you, Mr. Laman.
Under AE5A, I'd like to put this in a form of a motion to approve Mr. Jack Beener as temporary volunteer assistant boys' basketball coach for the remainder of the 2022-23 season.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
This time, I'd also like to offer congratulations to the boys and girls basketball team, to their coaches and student athletes, along with the boys and girls swimming team and their coaches and student athletes, and wish them best of luck in the upcoming playoffs. That concludes my report, Mr. Seppic.
Thank you. Mr. Frank Housler?
Regarding grievances, we do have the pending arbitration with the one professional employee grievance, which is scheduled for March 14th, and we'll keep you posted on the progress of that matter. Under L3A, request that the board approve the bond resolution, which is Exhibit R, and this as was presented by the Bond Council and the Investment Banking Group at the last meeting, and this is to allow for the amount not to exceed $28,960,000 with a provision in the resolution that the board will be made aware of the potential savings and approve that the bond issue be granted with the appropriate savings.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Laman?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Let's go to the end of Dr. Wallace, you wanna handle it?
We should go to executive session.
What's that?
We should go to executive session.
I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And it's reflected it is legal and contractual matters.
He saved me. It's mutual. You have to do right to know the right. Probably add a small... Yeah. Yeah, and just list the specific ones that you want. Like whether you want all of them, whether you want like fifteen. Yeah, like I couldn't give you anything personal. But, you know, anything else that you want, yeah. And the right to know should be on the website, you have to get one of the ones that are part of the district, four, and so on. Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Go ahead, Dr. Wallace.
Okay, going over to the addendum, I'd like the board to consider a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Chris Williams, SRO officer at the middle school, effective immediately, and add his name to the substitute custodial list, which Mr. Kalinsak has already done earlier in the meeting.
So move. Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
We'd like to thank Mr. Chris Williams for his time as SRO, SRO officer.
Thank you.
Next, item two, I'd like the board to consider a motion to table 2A.
Wait a second.
I'll make that motion.
Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'd like to make one statement before Mr. Frank Howser moves into item three. I know that there are a lot of track parents here this evening, wondering what's going to happen with the track. To be very upfront and transparent, the price that we received is well beyond our budget. It's around a million six to implement. We had a roof at one of our elementary schools, Marshall, that we feel is going to hap, well, we don't feel, we know it's going to have to be replaced, that is a priority, but we're not giving up the ball yet. I will be contacting the vendor and contractor tomorrow and asking them to do a better job and bring us something that is more applicable to what we can work within our budget right now, so that process continues into the rest of the week and into next week. That's the end of the addendums for my part.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Mr. Frank, how do you?
Item three on the addendum, before you, the Board of Directors, you have a resolution for the appointment of special counsel for the administration here at Laurel High and School District, which involves the potential discipline regarding a professional employee here at the school district. The need for this is to allow for separate counsel to be advising the administration, also conducting the necessary investigation, to be sure to comply with all of the requirements required by the Pennsylvania School Code, as well as the contract with the professional employees. To add to that statement, it's important to note that the administration, as well as this Board of Education, is bound by numerous regulations, requirements, statutes, and necessities in order to make sure that the process is handled accurately and within the legal bounds of the Pennsylvania School Code and the professional employee's contract. So to appoint the additional counsel, we'll allow this individual to advise the administration so that all of the proper procedures are followed. I myself will continue to be counsel for the Board of Education in the continuing, in the continuation of this process. And with that, we can make no further comment with regard to the circumstances or the situation that is involved with this employee, but we would request that the board consider the resolution as is before the board for the appointment of the special counsel for the administration.
Is that it?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to hire the independent counsel?
Motion.
Second.
Question on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Kalinsak?
Yes.
Mr. Lamon?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Suffick?
Uh, yes.
Seven yeses.
Do we have to name? Do we have to name the firm?
It's in the resolution, and the resolution is available for public review, but it is to hire the law firm of Radcliffe, Radcliffe Law LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Howser. General Matters, Career and Technical Institute report, do we have any report?
Just that the restaurant out there is open, and they are still doing adult classes for different things. If you look online, you can find it for, I think, Perugian class and different things like that for the culinary section.
All the reports I've gotten have been fantastic reports.
So it is too.
Mr. Suffick?
Yes.
The cosmetology department has Thursday hours where you can go and the students will provide the services, manicures, pedicures, different hair services, facials. I went and had a pedicure a couple of weeks ago, was amazing, I'm going back tomorrow to have a facial, so the cost of the, of the services are just for the products that are used, and they use top-of-the-line products, so I think our constituents here would really enjoy going there, and it's really great for the students because they need hours, so it helps them to get their hours so that they can get their certification.
Same is true for the barber school.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
In a restaurant, fantastic. Intermediate unit report, board members were reminded if they want to go to the convention to let Kim know. Under other business, public comment, anybody who'd like to speak to the board concerning anything, give us your name and your address. Yes, that's right.
Good evening, my name's Jim Nagle, I am at 209 Hopwood Fair Chance Road in Union Town. Mr. Wallace, thank you for the update on the track, we appreciate that, and certainly understanding that facilities are of a priority, and if there is roof issues at Marshall, we understand that. The only thing I would like to ask for is if, if this were not to progress, is there any, or would you investigate any alternatives in terms of the track season and what could happen there? As the conditions of the track do continue to deteriorate, do we start to see a situation where we might have safety issues for the athletes and those competing on the track?
Yes, we discussed that briefly also.
Okay.
If we get into an environment like that, we will look at leasing the facilities of a place that has what we need as close by for our home needs.
Okay, thank you very much. And then additionally, respecting that the idea of going back to the contractor and ask for better pricing, if in fact they cannot move on their number, is it then just reconvening amongst the board, determine what can be done?
Well, in essence, what I plan on doing is asking them for a ABC type of plan, letting them know that, look, maybe we can go all in on what it was proposed Monday night, but we do have an appetite to do something, but it has to be within some type of budget constraints, and those budget constraints we're working on now, but I need to know what they can do and when they can do it.
Okay, thank you.
And those are the conversations that I'll have with them this week.
And then with that, would we have to wait until the next board meeting to have an update, or would there be something that would be distributed?
Because they're, they're going to tell me what they can do and how fast they can do it.
Okay.
Depending on what we can get an agreement on, if it's something that can be done this spring into the summer and still be ready to go by the fall, we'll move forward with that.
And then?
I don't know until we start having those conversations.
And then with that, is this the GC you're talking to, do they already have subcontractors and people who are going to be doing the work lined up? With the industry that I'm in, in the design-build, I mean, we have contractors and we're in products similarly used in tracks where people are booked up through '25 and '26.
And that's a point that our vendor mentioned to us Monday night, that the sooner they know, the better. My plan is to talk with them this week, and if we have to have a special meeting within this week or next week, we'll do that in order to make a decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
And part of the dilemmas and part of the, the challenges that we have here is when we initially went into the football stadium or the football turf and the track, it was kind of a package deal, that at the very beginning of this would have been covered under Esser's money, and the state changed their regulations with Esser's money kind of midway into it, and said, okay, these things that you once thought were going to be funded through Esser's are now not eligible for Esser's. And one of those things was the track, which we are, I mean, the football turf, which was already started, we just couldn't stop where we were at, so we had to finish it, and the paving was all Esser's, so that didn't come out of our budget at all. We convinced the state that that was necessary and qualified under the Esser's formula and guidelines, but what is not Esser's funded is the track, so that's put us between a rock and a hard place, that's where we are. But we'll try to do what we can to get something done that's safe and a little bit better for our athletes than what's out there now.
Dr. Wallace, good evening. Tom Schaefer, York 6th Farm, New Town. What is the number that the contractor gave to you as to complete the track itself?
A million six hundred thousand and seventy-nine, I think was right, was that that?
Is there a, a number that's in the budget that we could expect?
Not at this point.
Does that amount?
No. At this point, no, there's not a number there.
So there's, there's no money in the budget at all, or you guys don't have an idea?
Right now, we're just starting the process of putting our budget together, and just to give you some of the facts that are, we're currently dealing with, this year, when we went into the budget season, we get our funding from our basic education funding pipelines from the state, and also from our special ed. Those two categories are state budgeted items that they, lack of a better word, funnel money to us for. In essence, the basic educa, education funding came in a million three eighty-nine less than what we thought it was going to be and what we were led to believe it was going to be, and likewise, the special ed funding came in about $200,000 less, so just going into the budget season, we're already a million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in the hole, that we're going to have to find a way to cut, to bridge, to, to make up that money to get to zero to where we're operable. And that's not necessarily uncustomary when you're looking at a budget issue in February, and there's a lot of work that's going to go into balancing the budget between now and June 30th, but, I mean, that's just what we're facing right now as we are coming into the budget season. So with that said, you know, when you're already a million and a half in the hole, for me to say, okay, look, you know, we have this number that's budgeted, that would, I, that wouldn't be fair to you, wouldn't be fair to me to say that. As time goes, we're going to do our best to bridge that gap and find an answer to something that we can do with the track. Thank you.
Anybody else?
General Pig, I'm the girls' head track coach, I also live in the district, also at 27 Gardner Avenue. I just wanted to bring up that it is a matter of student safety, most important, I have a long list of things I could mention, but generally, I've done a pretty good job of hitting most of those points, but I am most concerned about our student athletes that, that use the track, and it's, it's deteriorating condition, where we've had an increase, a definite increase in injuries, shin splints, things like, you know, where it takes the kids out of competition, to the point at which we have to now run a little bit more on the, or actually running on the football field as much as possible, which isn't probably doing the turf any good either, but if we actually practice and stretch and warm up all along the track, by the end of the, what, two-week period, almost every kid would have shin splints. There's like no balance to our track at all, and obviously, we have two lanes that are unusable at this point. So student safety is definitely my big issue and my biggest concern, and, and I do have, you know, structural concerns too. I was a, I'm a former football coach and love the turf. I do worry about runoff that we get, if you've ever come up during a heavy rainstorm, like a, a cloud burst, that water just rolls off the hill, and even though we try to divert some of that water, it's still, it just rushes over what we've done right across the track and into the new turf. And with it, it's bringing soil, unfortunately, there's some garbage underneath the bleachers through the years, all that type of matter, biological matter too, unfortunately, is now running and settling down into our new turf field. And I believe all of those issues have been addressed at that, in that new deal, a new fence, all that drainage is supposed to be fixed, so I know the cost seems a little high for the track restoration, but it's really more than that. It would solve so many issues, it would prolong the length of our football turf longevity with that improved drainage, and definitely the appearance. I mean, you look down, beautiful field, and then we got black pocket marks on our track, and some, you know, obviously, some, you know, some settling on the lane six. So I, I just think, just like you to consider all those things, and I know that you are, but I just want to, once again, just encourage you to do everything possible to try to replace that track, to better our athletes, and obviously, a new track would be a boost for our programs. Anytime you put a new track in or re-circus, you're likely to get 10 more kids, 15 more kids out the next year, just because of that enthusiasm they see that we've made an investment in them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Suffick?
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
Well, one thing, and one other thing that I don't think the public understands is, all these appeals on these assessments by Walmart, Target, all the hotels, all the big box stores that, they're all getting reass, they're all getting their assessments lowered, and we're losing money every year because the county won't do the reassessment. And they, they get money back, but all the taxpayers have to pick up the burden. The amount of money is ridiculous that we've lost just since I've been on the board, and I've only been on three years. It just, it's crazy, it's, when you're looking at that money loss, you know, the 1.6 million, and you're looking at a roof, I don't, I mean, I would love to do the track, and I agree with you 100%, we need the drainage over there, and that's all going to be taken, would be taken care of, but I just don't, I mean, they're still taking appeals and still getting it reduced, and Jim Hershey has been valuable to us in, in helping us, but he can tell you more than, than I can about how much money we've lost in that period of time, and that loss is some of it we have to pay back, and then in the future, the money we're losing. And if the county would do a reassessment, it would be a far greater, or far lesser loss, if a loss at all, and maybe we wouldn't have to raise the taxes and put the burden on the taxpayers, the homeowners, that we're starting to do, which is absolutely ridiculous. And we all go to Walmart, we all go to Target, we all fund these places, they make, over COVID, they made all that money, but we, that doesn't factor into their assessment. It just, it's ridiculous, it's, it's frustrating. It's frustrating sitting here, knowing we need that track, knowing we need that drainage, and we don't, we have to give these places money back, and we don't, where we could be putting that in. They're not invested in our communities, and to me, why are we investing in them?
And to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. DeAndrea is stating, the revenue that a Walmart produces, or a Lowe's produces, or Home Depot produces, has nothing to do with their assessments on their property. It's all based on their box, which is what they're called, box stores, and their comparables to those that are in the district or within a certain mileage. So that's something that we've been fighting and trying to get the formula possibly changed, but that's been quite an uphill battle for the past couple of years.
Mr. Hershey, could you have an idea on how much money we've had, we've, we've lost because of these appeals?
I didn't know that, I was not prepared for that question, to be honest. I can't.
It's probably over a million dollars. Yeah, I'd like to, if you would, could we get that? Because it's probably even close to two million dollars. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
And I think the, the other part of this that needs to be brought to attention is that the Commonwealth does not effectively fund education, so if they would provide the funding that's adequate for us, it's not our local responsibility to fund education. And there is, there is some legislature now brought about, I would please ask you to contact our local legislators and tell them that we need property tax relief because this problem is not going to go away, we are going to always be in a deficit until the state provides enough money for us to be able to run the district the way it needs to be run. So that's the big problem here that needs addressed.
Thank you, Mrs. Glad. Anybody else in the audience? Jim, go ahead.
Hi. Jim Hershey, I'm a resident in North Union Township, 500 Pittsburgh Road. Just want to comment on, on two things that have been brought up. Mrs. Glad brought up an excellent point. If you follow the news, a judge just ruled in a seven-year case that the school district funding was unconstitutional, however, he threw it back on the legislature to, to deal with. So he made a ruling, but, you know, we have to wait and see what the legislature does to confirm to his ruling. My second comment is to piggyback on the track issue, and I'm just wondering, when Dr. Wallace has his discussion with the vendor, the contractor, whatever we wish to call them, if it would be possible to have an alternate bid and possibly, year number one, address the drainage situation and the area of the track which is sinking and depressed, and then to solid that up, solid the foundation of the track in year one, and then in year two, possibly can, you would go through and do the final paving of the track, make it a two-year process, might be easier to budget for, and it addresses the immediate need of the drainage and the safety because part of the track is sinking, and as he prepares that, that, he's going to have to do that anyway, when you're redoing the whole track, he's going to have to rebuild that area that's sinking anyway, so if we do it in phase one and phase two, it might be more acceptable to the board financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. Anybody else? If not, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Question on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.